Roll call, Bold House.
Here.
Darling.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Like.
Here.
Mauer.
Here.
McLean, she is ill tonight. Moira Cale.
Here.
Tassiva.
Here.
And Hatfield, here. Let's do the pledge. You join me, please?
My pledge is to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've received a copy of the proposed agenda. Are there any changes anyone would like to propose?
The only comment I'll make really is not an agenda change, but you have in front of you the most recent text draft regarding the sign issue. So it's already in the agenda, but that replaces the one that was delivered in your packet. So the one you have in front of you is the most recent.
Okay. So note that change. Otherwise, any other changes anyone would like to propose?
I move approval of the agenda.
As amended by Dan's comments? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. You've received the minutes from the May 6 meeting. Any changes to those minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Moved and supported to accept the minutes as distributed. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Okay. We have no information items, so we have three public hearings. Dan, you want to introduce that?
Yeah, so the first public hearing is to review and consider the text amendments to the A1, A2, and AO zoning districts. This is something that has been in front of you now for a considerable period of time in the work task list. No need to refer to it, but the work task list has been highlighted at the request of the Planning Commission last month to reflect what's currently being proposed or worked on in front of the whole Planning Commission. Those items are highlighted in green on the work task list. And then items that the Housing Committee is working on. There's one item right now that the Housing Committee is working on. So in regards to the public hearing as Agenda Item 6, subsection A, those are changes that are reflected in the final three bullet points on the work task list. Primarily, right now, single-family homes are permitted use in those zoning districts. The proposed text would eliminate that as a permitted or even a special use. And that aligns perfectly with the master plan, that those were action items in the action plan, or excuse me, the master plan has addressed, because it's counterintuitive, counterproductive to have a multifamily district, but have a single-family use as being either permitted or special. So that's one of the items. The other one is regard to more dense units being classified as a special use. The proposed text would move that to be a permitted use and not a special use. And the final one would be, oh, as far as single-family conversions to multifamily, the current text requires the Planning Commission involvement in that. The new text would allow the zoning administrator to do that administratively. So those are the three primary text changes. Rebecca, if I missed something, please jump in. But those, and again, those components do line up perfectly with our master plan that was developed. So those were action items listed in the master plan, have been on the work task list considerable period of time, and is now in front of you for review of the text amendment.
You might also comment on the discussion that the Housing Committee had regarding other consolidations in the zoning code.
Yes. Yeah, Housing Committee has been working, will continue to work on consolidation of zoning districts, whether that be just a reduction in some of the zoning districts. We have a lot of residential zoning districts, either consolidation or kind of a redevelopment of those. Again, that's on your old business for tonight, is to continue reviewing that. I'll have a recommendation, and Rebecca may have a recommendation, as we get to that bullet point item. Housing Committee is also working on identifying single-family conversions that were converted to maybe likely two, but generally three and four units throughout the city. We're going to be identifying those for the Housing Committee and then likely come back at some point to the Planning Commission with a recommendation as to how do we address those single families that converted likely either a long time ago or possibly converted without the city's knowledge to three and four units. It's there, it's the elephant in the room, but we want to do it, you know, review that accordingly to see what action we can take, or you can take as a Planning Commission.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Any questions for Dan on the proposed text amendments to A1, A2, and AO zoning before I open the public hearing? Okay, then we'll, Rebecca, would you have anything you'd like to add before I open the public hearing?
I do not.
Okay. Then we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that would like to speak may step to the podium and speak for up to three minutes, seeing no one here. John?
Come on.
Thank you. So we'll declare the public hearing closed. What's your pleasure?
I would just ask a question, just to be the devil's advocate a little bit, on what harm does having a single-family dwelling being built in a multifamily district present? I'm thinking back to when we approved the plan for the Allen Edwin Homes development, and it seemed like for that we were intent on having a mix of multifamily and single-family in there. So I'm just wondering if that was our direction there, why?
Maybe I can address that. Multifamily is generally considered three and four family in a pub, because a single-family and duplex or two-family, Planning Commission, City Council addressed duplexes, you know, a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, allowing duplexes in our two zoning district. So the thought process behind this is outlined in the master plan, is allowing a single-family dwelling in an A1, A2, or AO zoning district, which is really geared more for multifamily as it should be, higher density. To plop a new single-family resident in that district is just counterproductive, it's counterintuitive. We're looking for more density and not less where a single-family would occupy, you know, considerable amount of space where more density is really desired.
Yeah, I would piggyback onto that, because that's essentially a foundational and critical strategy. But if you look at your zoning map, you know, you go, the city goes to a great deal of work to identify areas appropriate for that being the high-density, right? Because it has to be where there's infrastructure, it has to be, it's preferred in certain locations. And you don't have a lot of it, whereas single and two-family can go anywhere. And so the idea is when you strategically locate a finite amount of multifamily zoning, then to have it occupied by non-multifamily puts you in a deficit position where you're saying, well, now we need more multifamily zoning, because...
Right.
And so really, that target from the master plan, from the Housing Committee's standpoint, which is why they're doing, a lot of what they're doing is to say, because what they're also doing is looking at where this is and to see, you know, look, if we need more of it, then let's expand it. If we have it, if we have places zoned it and they're all occupied by single-family, then maybe we need to move it, that kind of thing. But you have to stop it happening, too. But you make it actually a valid point, because it's not because they don't want mixed density or mixed use, they simply want single and two-family not to consume all of it.
And I think we were really surprised at how little of these three categories we have.
Yeah.
It's very limited.
That all helps me. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Do we know the impact this change would have on existing single-family?
We have, the Housing Committee's been looking at information, and I will bring up... If I bring up, get it expanded. So on this map, as far as the legend goes, and I've got to get to it, the items marked in light blue, those are one-unit, basically, single-family houses that are being used for rental purposes. There's 135 of those registered in the city of Hastings as of a month ago or so. The red indicated circles are two-family or duplexes. There's 52 of those identified in the city. The green are three units, light kind of lime green. And then the darker, blue or purple are four units, and there's eight, four units and there's eight of those. So to kind of give you an idea...
What color is single-family?
Single-family is the light blue.
No, you said that was ones that were being rented.
Single-family rentals, yeah, one-unit rentals.
Where are the single-family houses, non-rental?
It would be likely scattered throughout this whole district.
I think the issue of Tom is, though, how many single families do we have in the three zoning areas that are being impacted by this change?
Oh.
And it's virtually done.
Well, I can tell you in A2, which is, I'll bring this information that the Housing Committee looked at, trying to get it so that it's somewhat legible. In the A2 residential, you know, there's, out of the, I believe, 60 units, there's maybe 10 to 15. But again, as far as the density goes, if they're two-unit, three-unit, four-units, we didn't cross-reference that. But there are, in the A2 district, there are very few that are truly, I'm living there, that's my house. Yeah, it's owner-occupied, correct?
Actually, the Housing Committee's looking at it, the exact same question. You're looking at it in terms of, you know, if we make this change to any of these A districts, what's that do to these existing homes? Housing Committee is looking at it almost from the other side of it and saying, this is the right change to make, because we need a district that can be, that can have this higher. And let's find out if there's any single-family homes in it, because if there are, that's not a reason not to modify the ordinance, it's a reason to change the zoning. So they are looking at that question to see exactly how much of our multifamily zoning is being occupied by single-family.
I have a second reason, and then you just brought up a third. If these go to, I'll do the third one first. If they go to multifamily, do we have supporting parking? So that's just a hypothetical, we can all answer that ourselves.
Right.
But the second one is, if you own one of those homes, and something happens to that home, we brought this up last month, how does Hastings, how does our zoning district enable those owners the ability to rebuild what they had? And right now, I think this change makes it very difficult for them to replace what they had. So in essence, somewhat driving them away. And again, maybe it's forcing higher density, but if these homes are insured and they can't get rebuilt, then what impact does that have on the owners? So I'm looking at it in the three...
I think the difference between this and what we dealt with last week, the non-conforming homes that were in that area didn't meet setback requirements and things.
But this is like a setback, this is a new regulation. So then, is it only special use that a single-family would be allowed, or is it not even allowed by special use now? So it doesn't matter what the obstacle is.
I think as long as they predate this change, they still have a right to rebuild.
That I don't think is...
It would be legal non-conforming.
Yeah.
But if they were damaged by more than 60%, I thought we talked about it last month, that they have to conform to all current codes. And this is, or will be, the current code.
Well, the regulations for a non-conforming use, that's different than for a non-conforming structure, right?
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. There's no question about that. There's no question about when you make any zoning change, just like when you make your sign changes, you know? There's a possibility that the modification to your regulation is going to create, is going to place some existing use into a non-conforming position. So legitimate question. And so, yeah, so if there are any single-family homes that are within these districts, they obviously can continue to exist as a non-conforming use. And if something happens to it, it cannot be within the confines of your, you know, ordinance, non-conforming section. You know, it can't be reestablished, it would have to be reestablished as an allowed use. So it would have to be, so the property is still buildable, it just would have to be built on, by a use that conforms, like a three- or four-family unit dwelling. Now, although that is a legitimate thing to consider, which is what's prompting your question as to, well, how many homes are we going to be making, non-conforming? I still think that has, I would urge you to make sure that you consider that in the construct of what are we trying to achieve with this district? Because it's very possible that what you end up doing is you're saying, yeah, we're trying to create a multifamily district, and if we have, if it's on property where there are single-family homes and it makes sense to rezone the property, that's what we'll do. We'll put it in a single-family district, and we'll add multifamily zoning elsewhere. That would be the better move than to just say, well, I guess we're going to allow a single-family everywhere, because we don't want to make anything non-conforming.
Some of the considers buying one of those homes today or tomorrow, or actually tomorrow, after this is deliberated, and if it goes into the current code, they have a choice, but the people that live there currently don't. And how many of the places that are single-family right now could rebuild as multifamily? Any of them, all of them?
Well, depending upon the zoning district.
Is it conceivable that some of them couldn't rebuild even per these standards?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that would require an analysis of each of the properties within all of these three districts. But I would suggest that the answers to those questions are what tell you if the property is properly zoned and not whether or not that district should allow a single-family. Perhaps those are reasons why that property should be put in a different zoning district.
I don't know, maybe I seem against the zoning. I'm not. What I'm pushing for is the exception due to hardship.
Well, what I think, what I think you should be doing, because I don't think you're being anti-making the text amendment, what I do think you're doing that is appropriate is to think through the steps of what makes this a good change. So I don't think that the hardship is not the issue. What, and I don't think, as a planning commissioner, you should be looking at it that way. Or you could make no change to anything. As a planning commission, you're attempting to construct a strategy for moving forward. And then what you go in and do is you fix where it doesn't align. And so if you say, we think our master plan says, here's what we want to do with our higher-density residential, and our districts are not implementing these strategies, and so we're going to make this change to do this, but it just so happens, we're going to do this study and we see that we either don't have enough of this zoning, or it's in places occupied by single-family that can't rebuild because the lots are too small, then you go in and you do step two, which is to, okay, we're going to modify our zoning map then to effectively implement the strategy. So changing the text is the first half of that. So it's not, it should never be, well, we can't do anything because we have a couple of pre-existing situations. It's like, all right, then...
I'm not opposed to pre-existing. I'm opposed to restrictions that have been imposed. I agree, higher density makes more sense in these areas.
So you rezone it, so then there are restrictions.
Tomorrow it does, but the people that have mortgages, bought land, we are forcing something upon them. If they want to add a garage, they can't. If they want to put a fence in, they can't. If they want to put a second story on, they can't.
But then, do you see the rezoning as a solution?
I see it being the first step, yes.
Well, actually, it'd be the second step, right? Where you'd say, okay, you were inappropriately zoned in multifamily, of which that's not your current use, nor is your property...
They weren't inappropriately zoned. They own the land, right now, we're changing the zoning.
No, you're not changing the zoning.
We're changing...
It's in a multifamily district for a use that is not multifamily. So if the Planning Commission says, okay, you're in this zone, and it's zoned and planned for multifamily, and not only do you not have multifamily use, your property isn't even big enough to do that. It probably should never have been in the AO to begin with, let's say. So we're going to put you in a zoning district that is more consistent with the existing and possible use of the property. And then you make that, so that's sort of like step two. But, so that would solve those various things, you know, concerns that you have in terms of, well, we don't want to create regulations that make the property unusable. Although I would also say that I'm being limited in my conversation to that the property could never be used as multifamily. I don't know that you'd have that same conclusion if the property were big enough to be used as multifamily, but simply has a home on it now, because you make those decisions all the time where you have non-allowed uses on properties zoned for other things, because the idea is always that in time, you know, it will be used consistently.
Tomorrow's investor, this is the right move. But yesterday's owners may be not always in the best interest for them.
Yeah, and that is zoning, that is true.
Okay, other questions? Chelsea?
I mean, Tom touched on this. Is that true that we would be restricting, without further changes, additions, or modifications to existing homes that are single-family in this, in these districts? Are we handcuffing them to say the house is what the house is, and there's no...
Can't expand a non-conforming...
Yeah.
So you can't build a back, or put a porch on your house?
Unless you go in and make, you know, you can always, you can always create a provision in your ordinance that says that non-conforming, single-family homes have certain, they have certain allowances.
I think we should look at, after this text amendment is passed, then we could look at the zoning map and see what's appropriate, and then take action from there if we feel it's necessary.
Well, I guess there are two questions that I have. You know, one, at this point, we don't know how many homes we're talking about. Are we talking about one, are we talking about two, are we talking about 20? And second of all, I think, yeah, the idea of incorporating some language that at least, we don't want to allow more, but we don't want to create a situation where the ones that are there are not allowed and encouraged to maintain the values of those properties. So I guess my question is whether or not we should table this to allow those two things to be further explored. We've held the public hearing, we didn't have any comment on it. We don't have to act on this tonight. We can table it and come back with the added information and then make a decision.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Sure.
Um, the zoning for these districts, right, they're already in those districts. So any change that would be being made to a single-family home would still have to, right now, follow those zoning restrictions, wouldn't they, for whatever the AO or A1 or A2 district is? So if they were going to do something with those now, they would still be, they would fall under the same set of rules, except for single-family in the future wouldn't be an allowed use? Does that question make sense? Because they're already held to the standards in those A districts, correct? The single-family homes? Are they considered special uses right now?
No, they're allowed uses, and so any work to the single-family homes is allowed, subject to the constraints of that district. But if they are no longer, if they, if you make the change and they become a disallowed use, then they're considering, then they're considered lawfully non-conforming, and then their ability to do work is reduced, even if it's consistent with those district standards. Because the idea of a non-conformity is that it is going to eventually conform.
Well, the only reason why I ask is because some of the things like building a deck, are they even allowed to build decks onto any structure in an A designation? Or what are the rules with garages and things like that? If those are already not allowed in those districts, that's maybe not as much of a consideration that we should be focused on?
Yeah, no, that would be, so they would be allowed to do that now, in theory. Whether or not each individual property is in a situation where they're able to make improvements in compliance with the ordinance... is in a situation where they're able to make improvements in compliance with the ordinance, that would require a lot of detailed analysis. I don't have the answer to that. I don't know how many non-conforming lots you have.
I struggle with the colors on the zoning map. Is there any chance, Dan, you could show us? Can you like show us on your screen what what areas we're actually talking about here? They're a little bit all over.
Different shades of beige.
Yeah. You have nineteen different shades of pinkish-beige color here.
And it looks like there are already exceptions in there for Green Street, Broadway, Hanover and State Street that aren't being struck from in the general development standards.
So I'm not sure this is going to help you, but from a color standpoint, but let me so as you look at this, try to get it. So if you see the tangerine color. Your color is different than mine on my screen, so. The tangerine color here up here and
Up at the top.
Yes, up here also, up by the river. These are A2 zoning. All A2.
And I think that's all of the A2.
Yes, that is all the A2.
Is the A1 just behind the hospital? Up on the end of Wood Bond and then up around the Baptist Church?
Primarily. I had to look at the zoning map.
So there's nowhere to even build anything in here anyways, is there? Is there a single open lot anywhere?
In here? I don't believe there's any vacant. So it would be conversions of a single-family.
And I think most virtually all of those have already been converted.
They've all been converted to at least two-family, if not.
Three or four.
So the goal here is density. That's the overarching goal, to make this change.
In the
Increase density.
Yeah, in the A1, A2 and AO zoning districts.
To allow for it to happen. Everything that you guys have been working on thus far that has essentially been coming out of the housing committee. So they took their marching orders from the master plan and they're trying to they're trying to implement these things. But but all four of these strategies thus far have everything to do with the the city who has taken the position that they have inadequate levels of housing. And that they're trying to think of way they're trying to accommodate the ability to provide more housing and more types of housing. So two different objectives. In essentially a built environment. So the city has some vacant properties, but not like a township, Mike, right? So so the master plan said, well, you have, you know, you actually right now, the way you guys are doing some things, you have the ability to increase the amount of housing units you do it you can have in the city. You simply don't allow it right now. So the one thing they did was the accessory dwelling units, right? Then the duplexes, they said you 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 only allow duplexes in like two districts and only on state highways. So there was another thing you did. It's like, so you're not really rezoning property or changing densities. Well, you are changing densities. You're simply saying, you know, you have ways of working within your built environment to get more housing units where you want them. So this third idea is to say you've got three multifamily zoning districts. You don't have a lot of property in those districts, but right now you have three different districts and they all have different things about them. And however, you do two things that hamper them being used for multifamily. Number one, the review process is difficult for conversions. So if someone has a single family and they want to go to multifamily, it's like a four-month process and that discourages it. So that's an easy fix. And number two, in the in this limited amount of in multifamily zoning, you allow single-family homes. So of the little bit that you do have, you're letting people go in there and build single-family homes. I realize that doesn't address existing homes, but that so that's sort of a nuance of this strategy, right? Or it's like, okay. But our our objective is to take what we have and allow for it and make it easier to get more housing that the city has said they need.
But when we know there isn't any vacant property to speak of, or is there are we by barring future single-family, are we really is that really a a change other than risking the risks we've discussed with the existing homeowners, I guess. That's in my mind, the balance.
I think if someone is looking at an investment and they want to buy one of those properties, they would absolutely want to make it a multifamily. They would not want to build a single-family. They can already do that. So what incentive is there for developers? None that doesn't already exist. So all this is doing is driving single-family out when when they have to sell or when they can't rebuild. And and part of that is okay, but when it's when it's an act of God, I don't like that. With no fault of their own, they're being driven off their property.
Yeah, I well, I've already said that not making the change in the zoning district is not the solution.
The change is already there.
To the to the to the one thing that you're saying is your hurdle. Because if you support the idea that, look, this is our multifamily district and we're trying to do X, Y and Z. But your one hurdle is the fact that you have some existing homes that will become non-conforming. The solution is not the solution is not to not fix your district. It's to change the zoning of the property.
My my opposition is different. If you want to promote multifamily, then you write multifamily into those districts. It's already written.
But I think, yeah, to try to summarize where we are right now. If we look at the proposed changes on this, the most substantive change that is proposed is actually taking multifamily dwellings out of special use and putting it into permitted use. The fact that we're also looking at potentially eliminating single-family detached dwellings in my mind is really a very minor point. Because A, there aren't that many of them to begin with. And B, the likely outcome is that most of those are going to be converted anyway. So you're left with just dealing with do we want to create a situation where there's a disincentive to maintaining the quality of those those few single-family dwellings that are there? And I don't think we want to do that. So maybe what we ought to be doing is looking at making the change from special use to permitted use, which is the big point, and not worry about the other one.
And not what?
Not worry about making the change, eliminating single-family detached. Because the probability of somebody building another one in there is slim to none.
Well, unless they can coordinate multiple parcels, which a lot of developers want to do. They're looking for smaller multifamily projects they can develop, especially within walking distance to downtown, and that's what this district is.
It's allowed though, or that's what we're proposing, is multifamily options.
Right, but if there's parcels taken up by single-family or new single-family, then that just makes it more challenging.
I guess the question really is, is is there really an incentive on the part of either a property owner or a speculative builder to put a single-family in when they could be putting multifamily in?
Well, the housing committee, the only thing I can think of, I'm the housing committee is studying this second part because they're in the process of of they're doing it for a lot of reasons, but it would assist in this too, right? Where they're looking at the three multifamily districts. They're identifying how many parcels are in those districts, where they are, and whether or not they're occupied and by what. Right? And so the housing committee is doing it, like I said, for a couple of things because they're working on some other things. But I do realize that the that the results of that study are the answers to your questions as relates to how does that affect current uses within within these three districts?
Which is kind of why I asked the question of the last housing committee meeting is to rather than getting the cart before the horse to go ahead with some of these changes.
Yeah, I know. I well, I understand that.
I still come back to the meat of this is moving multifamily out of special uses and making it easier to build multifamily. So I can't, I don't think that's in conflict with anything that the housing committee is going to be looking at in terms of, yeah, some of those changes. So we've got one issue that appears to be at least somewhat contentious that frankly is not an issue. It's such a small piece of this that I'm not sure it's worth beating ourselves up.
Well, it's only a small piece of it if there aren't many.
Right.
Then I would agree with you.
Well, actually, yeah, because actually if there are more than that, then it's an even bigger issue.
Well, I just think procedurally speaking, not procedurally, but a planning commission doesn't, you know, you don't you're not, you should not be guided by whether or not your change creates non-conformity. You should be guided by whether or not that is the direction you want to go for land use in a particular area. And so all the time and money you put into your master plan to say, here's where we want multifamily and then not to execute a change to create to stay with a plan that that allows it to be populated with single-family is is inconsistent with your plan. But I would agree with you. If it's a couple of houses, then all right, then.
But then I think maybe you actually had the answer back a couple of comments ago that we prohibit new single-family, but we at least make some provision in there for existing single-family to be improved.
Yeah, now that to me would be something more consistent with your plan, more consistent with your planning principles.
But I think before we add something like that, we should consider a map amendment to see if what's actually in there really belongs in there.
I agree.
So back to my original comment, should we table this until we develop more of that information? Which is being developed because that's what the housing committee asked for.
Yeah.
I mean, we can. I don't think we need to though, because this is the part that I think we understand best. I think it's the reviewing the map that is a second step that still needs to happen. But whether we amend the map or not, I think, at least for me, I think this change, these changes that are represented in the text amendment are best representative of what's identified in our master plan. But that's just my opinion. I'm not opposed to tabling it. I just don't personally feel that we need to. But if everybody else wants to, that's, you know, that's fine.
How are we reviewing the map? If we don't table this tonight? Or we allow time to review where these houses are and what impact it really has if we're not going to look at the map?
We can do it at any later date.
Not after this is done.
Sure we can.
I mean, yeah, we can look at the map, but it might have.
Okay, I need to get a few other people involved in here. Dave, where are you?
I agree with Sarah saying, we could we could approve this and and still work on, you know, other things. I don't I don't feel that there's enough houses in that area to be a problem with somebody, you know, but you know, my problem is if somebody's house burns down and it's non-conforming, we don't allow them to rebuild it. And that's a but I agree with what Sarah said. I think we could move forward with this.
Nicole?
That's I I agree with Sarah also. I think that we can move forward with the text amendments and then look at the zoning map and if we need to, then we can always amend the map so that the where those zoning designations actually are makes sense.
Chelsea?
I guess I don't understand the rush if we don't fully grasp what we're doing, what we're impacting with this change. And I don't feel comfortable that I understand and can quantify how many houses are out there that that we're effectively saying you better like your house the way it is. There are no you know, possibilities of additions or just small things like that that I hate to say, yep, we're going ahead and then we might fix it after tonight, but.
So we're meeting again on the 20th, right, the housing committee?
Yes.
So we could table this and really get into it on the 20th.
Well, I think we can do one of two things. We can table it or there's no dissension at all, I don't sense, on the part of moving the multifamily to a permitted use, which is the major point of this. And if we decide we want to come back later after we review the map and then eliminate single-family out of this because there is virtually none, that's easy to do as step two. But there's no reason not to go ahead and address the major issue of making it a permitted use and encouraging more multifamily development in these areas. Scott?
I'm kind of with you on that right there.
Okay, Levi?
I think last month we dealt with a 30-year-old zoning change that nobody understood. And this looks like another problem, 30 years down the road or something. So I agree that I think we should do the multifamily portion of it and leave the single-family alone. Leave it there. Not remove it.
Well, so we're going to, I mean, we'll talk about this later in the meeting, but my understanding of the zoning district consolidation too is that a review of the map and where our districts are after we consolidate them is going to be a part of that. So maybe this could kind of be a piece of that too.
Removing the single-family, yes. I'm just saying, I don't think there's any question at all about making the multifamily
No, I think that's obvious.
So I say go ahead with that. That sends a positive signal that we're still trying to move ahead and stimulate the housing and we'll carry the single-family piece of this forward into that bigger discussion and come back as appropriate.
Sarah, I do think the housing committee's review of these three districts that we're working with, the AO, A1 and A2, I think their study of that is very specific to housing and of these couple of charges under the master plan, like this being one of it and then this other one we're dealing with. then this other one we're dealing with. Although I see that as separate from the zoning consolidation work, I would say, and I think this is what you were saying, I would agree that the findings of this study, that although it's focused just on those three and on the housing, I can see where the findings of that can not only inform these couple of housing text amendment decisions, but then can be used on the consolidation work by the Planning Commission, because the Housing Committee is not doing the zoning consolidation work.
Right.
So, I, I just want to make sure you guys felt comfortable with that.
Okay. So, it would seem to me that we're all comfortable with moving the multifamily to a permitted use and will not move forward on eliminating single family, but we will consider that in, in a future meeting when we're feeling like a bigger issue.
Can I ask another hypothetical? If the single houses remain, would they have an incentive to be turned into office space or offices? Because that's Section F of 422. There might be other ones, too, but that, and I don't mean if they're allowed to stay, but I mean if, if we take single-family houses out, then what is there could either be torn down and turned into multifamily, or...
Ray, while we're talking about taking them out.
And we're not, I'm just saying, though, if, if the goal is to increase housing, there's an incentive for those single homes that are there to not become housing, but to become maybe something else that's more consistent with the district, like office space, retail space. So, the, the goal is multifamily. Get it? I agree that adding the multifamily element, making it permitted and not a special use, absolutely makes sense. That brings in the incentive to keep housing first and whatever else then becomes second.
So, are you taking that stuff for good? I'm sorry. I'm looking for a motion now from somebody who would like to...
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to adopt the, or make multifamily permitted use? Is that what you want? Is that what you want, the motion?
It's not what I want.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, is that, is that where we're going here?
I think that's where we're going here. So, okay, so, we have a motion that will deal with the changes that are in bold that move multifamily from a special use to a permitted use.
In the A2?
Yes. Further, is there support? Okay, we have a motion of support. Further discussion?
Just to confirm, we're adding the bolded portion, but we're not doing the strikeout?
Correct.
You're not, um, the single family?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. So, we'll move on to Item B, which is a public hearing to review and consider text...
Are you, are you postponing consideration of the remaining changes?
We're just not addressing them. We just, I mean, you, you only had the one proposal in there.
Well, you have other strikeouts that are proposed, and if you're not doing anything with them, um, so you, so you, I, I was initially working in the impression you wanted to wait for the Housing Committee to do their zoning map study and report back?
Yes.
If that is true, or I mean, if that's the case, then I would suggest you postpone the public hearing on the remainder of the amendments to the July meeting to let the Housing Committee report back. If you don't want to consider them at all, then, then you would just...
Well, I guess the question is, because we're probably, those are probably going to be part of an even bigger issue, aren't we going to have to hold another public hearing anyway?
A, a, a bigger issue?
More changes.
Well...
I mean, if we postpone this, then we can only deal with the issues that are currently identified.
No, I understand, but I...
And we're saying we're going to look at the bigger picture when we have the maps and everything.
Well, you're certainly free to do all of that. My understanding of your bigger picture was that in order to understand whether or not you wanted to remove single family, you wanted an understanding of, of the current land use situation in those three districts.
Yes.
So, I guess I was thinking, once you got that, there was, under some circumstances, you might find removing single family acceptable, and if that were true, then you could move forward. That's not to say that with further down the road, you're going to be making other changes with the consolidation, but I wasn't connecting those two. But are you saying now you, whether the Housing Committee studies this or not, the Planning Commission is not interested in moving any of that forward at this time?
I guess my pers- yeah, perspective was the same thing that I expressed with the Housing Committee. I think we've got some big issues in front of us that encompass both reorganizing, retitling certain zoning ordinances, as well as changing boundaries once we see the map of what's where. So, I didn't think that it made any sense to continue to pursue the single family only as it pertains to this, but as it pertains to the bigger picture. Am I...
That was my understanding.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So, all right. So, we'll move on to Item B, which is the public hearing to review and consider text amendments to Section 90-1010 buffer zone development standards and adding, and review adding Section 90-1014 prohibited species. Dan?
Yeah, so, again, on the work task list, we've had this listed as an item to clear up for a while, to eliminate invasive species from the approved list as far as our landscaping requirements go. So, it's a, it's a cleanup and, and basically an addition of the prohibited species.
Rebecca?
I have no comments.
Any questions for Dan before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll declare the public hearing open. Mr. Rezegy? Okay? And then close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Section D, or Section 1, but paragraph D, the at least 50%, does that need to be in there? Or can it just be simply no buffer, no new buffering can be of the species listed in the, whatever they call it, the...
The invasive?
The invasive.
So, trees or any plant can be not native, but also not invasive. There's a lot of trees that are not native to Michigan, but could be perfectly well-suited for the buffer zone, because they're not harmful. We're just trying to keep out the particularly harmful trees.
Well, we're na- we're naming oak, serviceberry, muslewood, hickberry, black gum, yellow Kentucky coffee tree, and bald cypress as selected trees.
As native trees.
Right. So, are we saying those are the only ones that can be planted?
No. You can plant any tree as long as it's of the right number of canopy ornamental and evergreen, as established in the buffer zone in a previous section, and it's not invasive. And at least, in this version, at least half of them should be native.
That means such as not exclusively.
And again, I, I don't mind calling out, no new trees can be the invasive variety. I do mind the 50% because, again, that might create a hardship. Someone goes in and they've got a buffer that is native, it's 50-year trees, and it's, and it's...
This doesn't apply.
It does.
No, it doesn't.
At least 50% of the selected trees in that buffer have to be non-invasive trees. And what if you don't have to put any new trees in at all, but they're all invasive?
Most trees that people have planted are not invasive.
I'm just saying, I think this standard says if we have to add to a buffer, we can't add invasive ones.
Correct.
What if there are some invasive already there and they account to more than 50% of the trees there? Then you have to take some of those out.
They just don't count towards the requirement for the buffer zone.
So, you'd have to put in 100%? Let's just say...
No, no. You're, you're, you're taking it too far. This says only what can be planted, if they need to be planted. It doesn't say, yeah.
Let's say you have to create a buffer zone, and let's say it needs to be 20 trees.
Okay.
But you have 10 existing trees that are all non-native. So, do you still have to put in 20 new trees?
They can be non-native, they just can't be invasive.
What you're planting cannot be invasive. What you're planting cannot be invasive.
But what's there can't be counted.
Towards the minimum requirement. Correct.
But what is minimum requirement? If you can't count what's there, if they are invasive, then you essentially, you either have to remove them, or you still have to put in 20 new trees.
Yes.
But you have 10 that are there currently acting as a buffer.
They may be acting as a buffer, they may not be acting as a buffer, depends on what it is. But if it's invasive, it's causing damage to the natural landscape, that's not something that we want to include as a, as a part of the required landscape.
But they're not planting them, they're already there. So, are we...
But they're trying to use it, they would be coming to us and saying, we want to use these plants as a part of our buffer requirement. And we would say, no, because they're invasive, you need to have at least the minimum that we require of different species.
That's what I'm getting at. So, that's the way I read that.
Other comments, questions? What's your pleasure?
I think a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 625 as amended.
Okay. Do they have support? Is that Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Chelsea, supported by Dave, to approve as drafted. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or no. Okay? One no, motion passes. Public hearing to review and consider text amendment to Article 90-11, signs, Section 90-961, 90-963, 90-967 sub E, and 90-973 sub A, sub 5. I thought I said it pretty fast.
Did a good job.
Thanks. So, and that's the handout that was at your place today as opposed to the one that was in the packet. So, Dan?
Yes. So, Dan, referring back to the work task list, Item Number 2 has been on the list, I think, as long as I've been here, going on eight years. It all, it all kind of revolved around the sandwich boards in the, in the central business district. When the sign ordinance was revamped before my arrival here, those boards, for whatever reason, were left out of the, the text. So, this text, and really kudos to Rebecca for looking at the whole ordinance and really bringing it current as far as some of the definitions of signs and, and how they're actually, the applicability in today's world and how they're used and clarifying the terms. So, it does address the sandwich board type of temporary signs, locations and such. Rebecca did change, you know, some of the language for balloon signs, inflatable signs, pennant signs, again, to bring it up to date as far as her zoning code goes. She did highlight in bold the changes. She also highlighted in red more dimensional or location type of standards. As far as the wireframe sign, again, that's been a bugaboo for the last couple of years. And she's, she's kind of included or expanded that, because not all temporary, typically this time of year, political season, you see a lot of those type of signs in yards. Some are wireframed, some are plastic. So, it just incorporates that, so there's less ambiguity. Again, you know, we, you could list every material in the world, but generally, it's, it's either metal or, or wireframe or plastic. Other than that, like I said, some of the sign language has been updated, but really, it just cleans up our sign ordinance and brings it up to speed to today's world. And I'll let Rebecca elaborate if you have specific questions regarding the text. Rebecca did, Becky did assist us with that.
Yeah, the, the draft that was on your table represents the draft that you received last month with four changes, and those four changes, three of it are shown in red, one is a strikeout, and they are a result of your conversation last month. So, you guys made the comment about the pla- the adding or plastic to the wireframe sign. There were a couple of changes with respect to the location of a sidewalk sign and its relation to the building that it's, storefront that it serves, and then a change related to the fact that temporary, you currently do not require sign permits for temporary signs. And so, there were a couple of places where sign permits were referenced in this, and so that change has been made. And though, like I said, those were items that you raised last month, and so we went ahead and reflected them in this revised draft.
I'm probably missing it. Where is the limitation on the size of temporary signs?
It's on top of page three.
And I'm particularly...
Number seven establishes...
Okay, the wireframe sign.
Size for wireframe, for post, for banner and cord bow.
I thought, what are our original limitations on yard signs less than four square feet? I'm thinking now of your typical political sign, or even a for-sale sign, you know, real estate for-sale sign.
Well, let me look. I mean, we're only modifying a couple of provisions of the sign ordinance.
Okay, so it may be someplace else.
Yeah, but let me look, I can find it for you. The only things in here were related to the sandwich board signs.
Okay.
So, it's possible that they just didn't get, let me see.
And again, the primary changes are the B1 through B6 districts. Sign, on page two, the Section 9967, those are... On page two, the section 9967, those are sign regulations applicable to all districts. But the primary changes are specifically focused on the B1 through B6 districts.
Dave, what were you wondering?
Well, we, in the middle of page two, we exempt permanent signs that are one and a half square feet or less. I thought that same size restriction or something very similar to that applied to temporary signs. Or at least some of the temporary signs. And I'm particularly referencing what we see most of today, which are political signs. We don't permit political signs to be four square feet. They're smaller than that.
Well-
Most of them are smaller than that. The yard signs are smaller than that.
You do a lot, if you're allowing temporary, if you're allowing wireframe sign, well, also, if you want subsection A, where I've added the word permanent.
Yes.
The way your ordinance reads right now is signs which are 1.5 square feet or less in area. So that would include any sign.
Okay.
And what that means is that a 1.5 square foot sign or smaller is exempt from these standards. Now, I added the word permanent because I was thinking the temporary sign standards were regulating everything else. But if you don't like that, you can just leave it how it is, which it just says signs.
Yeah, because, I mean, the ones we're most concerned about are, yeah.
But that doesn't mean that a person cannot have a political sign bigger than 1.5 square feet. All that says is a 1.5 square foot sign is exempt from the sign bags.
Okay.
But it still might be that you want that permanent removed. If you want, if you want any sign, permanent or temporary, that is one and a half square foot or smaller, to just not have to mess with these, that's fine. We can just take that out.
Well, I'm thinking of everything that has fallen under wireframe in the past.
If you think four square, that's your standard right now, but if you're saying you think that's too big, you, I mean, you can change it. But you can't change it by sign content, only by type of sign.
Right, I understand, right.
Four square feet doesn't seem that large to me. Were you talking realtor signs or whatever?
No, but I think, I don't think any of them, most of them are not that big now. Well, some of them are, but not a lot of them. Maybe we stick that only on wireframe signs because that's what typically covers your home improvement and political signs. I'm not sure that I want to drive down the street and see all the political signs all of a sudden become two by two as opposed to whatever. I don't, you want a bigger sign in your yard, I can probably make one.
So on the back page of this, it's still recognized with wireframe sign, no more than four wireframe signs shall be permitted. Is that going to be changed to plastic too? Because that's what we're getting into now. Because I think the wireframe sign was kind of the political sign, wasn't it, Dave?
Well, under definitions, we define wireframe signs. So back on page two, top section, wireframe signs, and defines what it can be made of and attached to, and that includes the plastic. So that picked up what I brought up last month. But I'm wondering whether or not we should stick a size limitation on wireframe signs.
There is. In section 90-967, as far as temporary signs.
Okay.
Temporary signs shall meet the, it's up on the board, it's-
Yeah.
I can't expand it, yeah.
Four square feet.
Each sign shall not exceed four square feet in area and 30 inches in height.
Okay. I'm just saying that's bigger than what we commonly see now.
I've never measured them, I don't know. It would seem consistent with what we see.
Okay, all right. Nobody, it's not that big a deal to me, so.
I'm thinking through adding permanent on exempted signs A, and I think I prefer to not apply it only to permanent signs.
I, the thing is, is that with temporary signs not requiring a permit, I think most communities consider temporary signs to be their area of where they have problems.
I would agree.
Yeah. And so, to, so that essentially would, but you're probably thinking of political signs, aren't you?
Um, well, I'm just thinking they're so small and the number is still regulated, correct?
No, this would exempt them from everything.
This would exempt them from that too, okay. I don't know, have we had issues?
But I don't know, maybe that's preferred, pardon?
So you could put a whole bunch of little signs in your yard?
Well, if you, currently, currently that's true, you can. I added the word permanent because I thought, I don't know that you want to open it up that way to permanent signs, or to temporary signs. And the temporary signs tend to be the thing that gets problematic for a community. But right now, you can.
What kind of issue has this been, Dan? I guess I'm thinking signs that's small typically say garage sale and get posted to public property when they're not supposed to-
When they're not supposed to.
More than them being in their right location.
That's a perfect assessment. Yeah, generally those little garage sale signs or whatever, they're posted illegally. They're posted on utility poles. They could be posted in the curb lawn with an address or something. I guess I would tend to agree to make it permanent. And then, you know, temporary signs would not be included. That'd be a correct statement, wouldn't it, Becky? That temporary signs would not, would not be exempt. It would just be permanent signs.
With the addition of that word.
With the addition of that word. So temporary signs then would, of that nature, would not be allowed. Which would be fantastic.
Well, I think I'm good with everything else in here.
I'm doing a little research, the four is close enough. I would draw my-
What is the standard?
Huh?
I'm just curious, what is the standard?
Looks like probably 18 by 24 would be the typical sign, so. So you're at three square feet.
Yeah. So that's probably about what we're seeing.
Right, yeah. Most of us are too cheap for my bigger ones.
Can I suggest adding to our wireframe the support part to include also wood or composite? Not just metal or plastic?
You're right, because some of the cardboard, when they sandwich them on both sides of a single wood stake. It wasn't detailed enough last one, I apologize.
So a corrugated, plastic, vinyl, cardboard, poster board or similar material, supported by it or attached to, and then you want to list the different materials of frames too?
Well-
Well, we want to name two.
Yeah.
And I can think of at least two more that are reasonable.
Can we just say attached to a frame of sturdy material or?
I was going to say, I-
You worded, you shopsmithed.
I mean, the only reason why we brought it up was because it specifically referred to wire. And you are seeing much more than just wire, so.
I will have to say, I've never seen that in a sign ordinance before. Reference to a wireframe sign.
What else are they called?
Well, they're not distinguished. I mean, if it's a temporary sign or a permanent sign.
Yeah, I guess that's the point, why does it need its own?
It's like it's a stake sign, like you're staking it in the ground. Yeah. Or sturdy material. Not stapled to a fence post, not stapled to a tree. I mean, defining the sign as needing its own support maybe is why.
Yeah, usually what a, usually what a sign ordinance will simply refer to as permanent and, a permanent sign versus a temporary sign. And then they'll create the standards for it in terms of size and everything, but as to how your-
Well, again, that corrugated sign could get stapled to a tree that's in your front yard, could get stapled to a fence post that's in your front yard. And if we don't care what it's attached to, but by saying that it's got to be attached to something of its own, it's forcing it not to be stapled to a tree.
Should we say it's self-supporting?
Yeah.
And call it a yard sign.
Seems like portable sign covers everything that wireframe sign needs to cover to me.
But Becky, if it's not specifically spoken to, it's not permitted, correct?
Well, so what you guys have done is you've listed types of temporary signs and then you have different standards for each one.
Right.
So, right, like a wireframe, a wireframe sign is four square feet, a post sign is eight. I mean, and this is its current construction. A banner flag is 20. And so theoretically, you know, if a person wanted a bigger sign, they would just use a different form of signage. And I think it's a little more standard, although there's nothing wrong with this, it's probably just more standard to say a temporary sign, square footage is this, whatever your standard is. And then, now you can distinguish by district, which is a little more common. So in residential districts, they might have a maximum temporary sign size of, let's say, four. And then in a commercial, they might have, you know, 12 or something like that. But, you know, I know you guys were just trying to address your sandwich boards. And I hate for you to engage in a-
Right. Yeah, because this could, it could go on for-
You've gone on forever about signs.
Right.
And we have.
I think this is fine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not perfect, but I think it meets our needs for now. And if we want to readdress signs in the future, the door's always open for more sign conversation. But I think this fixes our immediate concerns.
Because we have had an occurrence working with our code enforcement officer, where you've got neighbors who maybe don't agree on things. And we had a situation where they were putting signs up on a tree that was down the property line, stapling it to the tree. And he asked me my opinion, I said, "It's got to come down." Because those signs don't meet our standards. They're not post-wireframe. You can't just plop tree, or signs on trees, because we don't have a standard for that. So it has to meet the standards in the ordinance. And he went and removed the signs and explained to the property owner what the problem was. It doesn't meet our standards. So, I think our standards are good. And they're pretty easy to enforce and pretty easy to relay regarding signs in the residential districts. But to Becky's point, we're kind of addressing the business signs, B1 through B6.
Okay.
I have two more.
Okay.
The section, or number D of the 90-973 on page three, a middle way, these are referencing temporary signs in the B1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 districts. So is it conceivable that businesses within that district would not be in compliance if we can't have a sign closer than 20 feet to a curb? There aren't businesses that are right up next to sidewalks?
No, so you're looking at subsection five?
Subsection, the temporary-
5D.
5D. And it talks about it can't be closer than five feet to the front street right of way, nor closer than 20 feet to any curb.
The portable sign, that, now this is a-
Temporary sign, that's what-
Yeah, it's referring to a portable sign, which is one kind of temporary sign as defined on page one. It is not speaking to the permanent sign.
Temporary signs shall not be illuminated, temporary signs to all districts, it says, including handheld, anchored.
So, you know, a portable sign is, it's not affixed to anything permanent. It's on like a trailer or something to that effect. The definition of portable sign is a temporary sign not affixed to a building or structure and by its nature may be or is intended to be easily moved from one location to another. So what that's saying is that in addition, these, all of these different temporary signs are allowed in the B districts in addition to their permanent sign. And then subject to these various standards you guys have. So D is, it is true, it is establishing locational requirements for that portable sign. And so, and so was there one of the locational standards that you were? I'm sorry, what was your?
The business district, doesn't it have real minimal front side, the building setbacks?
Yeah, you can't use them there.
Can't use them there.
Because you're going to block a sidewalk or you're going to block sightlines.
We have sidewalk signs, are those something different than temporary signs then?
The size requirement. Well, it's different than a portable sign. A sidewalk sign is a temporary sign. But it's, by the definition, is an A-frame sign that you only put out when you're open and then it has to be in front of your storefront. And it's only allowed in the B1 district.
This just says temporary signs, so.
So-
If a sidewalk sign is a temporary sign, then isn't it part of, part D? And so now it's not allowed.
So there's a bunch of temporary, kinds of temporary signs. So on the first part, it defines what all the different temporary signs are. And then this says temporary signs are subject to the following. And then A through F, each addresses a different kind of temporary signs. So the D, the thing we're talking about right now, is specific to a portable sign, so that would not apply to sidewalk signs. So portable signs like the kind on a trailer, you know, the-
And honestly, we don't see those many, we don't see those type of signs much any longer.
Yeah, I don't think they're as popular.
They're not as popular. I think that there's no technology, the technology is way out of date. You know, most of them have interchangeable letters and numbers. People mess around with them, so.
We always had to move them back into the parking lot because anything else- anything else was too close to the street.
So we just don't see those really much anymore at all.
I did. And then F, with the same section, first of all, it says, "One sidewalk sign per storefront." And then, number four, says, "Shall be placed 20 feet from each other." If you can only have one, then it can't be next to another unless it's an adjacent property that that is referring to.
Yes, correct.
And I simply ask why?
Just clutter of the sidewalk. It would be, you know...
I just think it'd be difficult to have two neighbors always agree, "Well, my sign was there first." And so someone else comes the next morning and tries to get their sign out first, and then it's just a, it's just a battle that may not be necessary, I think.
Well, but if you've got two neighbors that don't like each other, it prevents a battle of placing them on the property line and trying to block the other business's signs. So, yeah, it gives some guidance as to what they can and cannot do.
Okay. Well, at first, I read it as, "We can only have one," but then we're saying, "We can't have them closer than 20 feet to each other." So I read it, first of all, that it seemed like a conflict to the one property.
Well, no, you are correct. It's referring to adjacent signs.
Adjacent. So maybe adjacent should be added to that, or not.
Other questions? Okay. What's your pleasure? Are you ready to move forward?
Did we open it to the public?
Didn't I?
I didn't write it down if we did.
I'm sure. Didn't I ask you if you had?
You asked me so many times, I... The answers turned out the same, so, you know.
Just open it again.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. John? Okay, close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yes. So what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion and accept this as presented.
Okay.
Support.
Motion and support. Further discussion?
Is that gonna include the word permanent?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the way it's written. Right, because I know we talked about getting rid of, talked about keeping it.
Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same. Okay, approved. New business? We have none. JP, old business, JPA, JPC update? I don't think either group met.
I don't think I ever met.
No, neither group met, so... Work task list, Dan?
We've already kind of touched on this for the public hearings. If there's something that you'd like to see different, or would like me to add or change for next month, just let me know, and I'm happy to do that.
Questions for Dan? Hearing none. Tracking report?
I do want to make just two comments. EWB, which is Eric Butler's property, the sign that was approved by the planning commission on the side, or the corner of the building, has been placed. The monument sign is still there. I spoke with Mr. Butler last Friday. I explained to him that a condition of that, the sign approval was the removal of the monument sign. He's assured me that's gonna be done fairly quickly, because he doesn't want it done there either. I said, "Please, as quickly as possible, because I will follow up with him." So I have addressed that, and I do want to make note that Whitewater Car Wash, their certificate of occupancy was issued on May 15th, so that will fall off the report for next month.
Any news on when they're having their opening?
The 6th is what I heard.
Yeah, the conversation I had with the gentleman from Houston, Texas, where their headquarters is at, was soft opening on June 6th, which is Friday, I believe, Thursday or Friday.
But they've said to the people that have been in there that it might not, it might not happen. So I didn't know if you heard anything permanent or...
I have not heard anything, any updates since my conversation.
Other questions for Dan?
Well, the final one on the list, Rusty Bible, it appears at this point that he will not be moving forward with that property. Actually, it may already be up for sale or available for sale. So I'll update as I get further information.
Any idea what the issue was there? Was it anything we...
It was nothing, no, it was nothing planning commission related, from what I understand.
All right.
Could I ask a question related to the task list? I just want to confirm in the record, the motion on the public hearing items with the A1 and all those districts we're talking about, I know that the board recommended approval of removing the MF dwellings as a special use and putting it up as a permitted use, which equated to item 13 on the task list. And I think your intention was to also approve the change to 427, which doesn't require it to go back to the planning commission, but allows administrative review. But I didn't write that down in your motion, and so I think the only thing you were meaning to put on hold was what equates to item 15, which is...
I think that's, that's correct. I'm not sure where the other one appeared in the text we were looking at.
It's on page three, and it's 9427, which equates to item 14.
Oh, so it's just the as regulated by section 90-127B.
Which means administrative review.
Okay.
And I think you guys intended to support that, but was that part of the motion?
It was not.
Okay, can we...
I thought we made the motion only to take out the single family, everything else, everything else to be approved.
If that's true, then we're covered. I just had, I wrote it down that you...
Does anybody question that that was our intent, just not to deal with the single family issue and to do everything else?
Okay.
Okay. The minutes will so reflect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Zoning district consolidation, anything?
Again, the memo from, no, let me get down there. Oh, you have it, you're back. So, you know, that's a, that's a big slice of pie, looking at our zoning map and looking at consolidation or restructuring of that. And I know, you know, we've had some discussions, long discussions regarding what ifs and what abouts. So a consolidation of the zoning districts, or the elimination, or combination, is a, is a big piece of the pie. But what, I guess, I, as staff would like, at least a brief conversation on, would be, would you like to see staff prepare like a draft map with reflecting some of the changes that are being proposed in the memo, so you can kind of visualize what, what the intent is of, of this project? Because, you know, we, we could get down, you know, really down into discussion regarding what ifs, or what happens here. But again, we're looking at the global picture. We're taking a look at, you know, a real broad planning idea here in consolidation, combination, restructuring. And if it would be easier for the planning commission members to see a draft map of the proposed changes reflected next to what the current map is, staff would be happy to prepare that for the next meeting, if that would...
Well, I was actually, I was even thinking, in addition to that, is just a really broad outline of what that district might look like. Because my fear is that, because it's such a big picture exercise, is that my fear is that the planning commission is, is going to become easy to spin your wheels on it, and after a couple of months, you're gonna be sick of seeing it on the agenda, right? Because it'll feel like you never make any progress. And I thought, but I understand that, in that you have a suggestion in front of you, but what represents step two then? And I thought, I realize it's hard to say, "I think this is a good idea," when you're not exactly sure what that would look like. But who wants to put all the effort into seeing what it would look like if you're not gonna do it? And so you get stuck in that place. And I know that's what happens when planning commissions take on projects like this. And so I thought, maybe that would help keep that, you know, sort of in front of you in a, in a more positive way, as if, if this proposal were reflected, sort of sketched out on a map as to what that would look like, and an outline of those districts as to what that could look like. And then you could say, "Yeah, I don't like this," or "I like it if," those kinds of things. Is that of interest to you?
This came up at the last housing committee meeting, because whether it was intended to or not, this kind of fell into that committee, committee's lap. But the question that I asked, and we really didn't resolve, was that, you know, we're also trying to figure out what zoning changes we need to make to accommodate more multifamily. And, yeah, which means that, you know, we're also gonna be coming back with potential changes in zoning maps to, yeah, establish perhaps more multifamily areas. And are we better off trying, which is the cart and which is the horse? Yeah, if we're, because if we're going to establish new districts or substantially alter existing districts, that kind of flies in the face of what we're trying to do here. That was the same look you gave me at the housing committee.
Well, I was gonna say, I know what I told the housing committee. I see them as two separate things. I think the housing committee does its thing.
But I thought we resolved that we didn't see them as two different things. That the committee did not see them as two separate things.
Oh, okay. I might have missed that. That's possible.
Well, I wasn't the only one there, so...
So you're talking about creating a map that's not necessarily assigning, I don't want to call it a value judgment on where, where they should be, but just if we consolidate these districts, this is where it would be according to how it's zoned currently.
Currently.
So it's not like, this is how it should be. It's, this is where we would be, and then we'd have to make decisions about if it's appropriate and if we want to modify the boundaries. Is that kind of a plan?
Yeah. And to me, that's less difficult, because that's just combining colors on a map, right? I mean, that's easy to say, "Well, if we combine these three, that's what that would look like."
Sure.
But I think there is some nuance with, for as much as I think it makes sense from a master plan standpoint, and from the way the districts are constructed currently, that it makes sense, that I think they can be easily combined, there are going to, I can see where that, that's just abstract right now. And so I thought, I wonder if, if an outline of what those might look like, those three new districts, right, to say, "Here's a way that you could combine those three districts, and this is what it might look like," then you could say, "That's, you know, I see how that fits together." It was just a thought, because otherwise, I got this sense, the same, I had this fear that the same thing that happened to the housing committee is gonna happen to you guys, where the housing committee had a task to do, and they started talking about the zoning consolidation, and it totally, it totally redirected them from their task, and they achieved nothing. Well, other than...
No, we didn't. We did at the end. We finally came back and said, "Okay, here's how we're going to proceed."
Well, but I mean, that could have been, but I think the zoning consolidation plan, because the zoning consolidation plan is not, is not a housing-related project. And so I think the housing committee's question legitimately was, "Well, if we go to this trouble and make some changes to our multifamily districts, and based on a couple of things, then how's that going to comport with this exercise going on over here, where they're combining districts? How's that, how's that going to mesh? And is, is there sense to doing one first and then the other? I mean, which, and if so, which one should be first? Because they're not the same thing. So I don't, I, my direction to the housing committee was, I don't think it's the responsibility of the housing committee to do it, because it involves a whole bunch of non-residential districts, so it's not a housing thing. And it's a much bigger project, and it's just going to mean neither one, I just didn't think that was a, I didn't think that the housing committee had been charged with that. And I thought, I think the housing committee would do better to focus on their task at hand. However, I can see then how, what your end product is. Let's say that the housing committee comes up with an end product that you really like, and that you think this is, this would be great to do this. Then the planning commission can use that in making their decisions on the consolidation and say, "We like this outcome. How do we, right, how do we transport that into this combination?" So, I mean, in that respect, maybe you want the zoning consolidation effort to wait until the housing committee is done. I mean, that I got.
I didn't like the map idea at first, but now I do. Because what I like about it is, I think it gives us an approach to managing this that starts big picture, and then we can narrow it down. Because if we go district by district by, we are just gonna go in circles, because one thing affects another. If we do it this way, I think we can make it more manageable, I hope. It's a big project.
It is a big project. And, you know, staff, what staff does not want to do is to throw something at the planning commission board, or planning commission, that is just that. It's too big, it's a big elephant. You can't eat it all in one bite. So at least if you had it overlaid on a map with the proposed changes corresponding to what it looks like now, the bigger picture hopefully comes into focus a little bit easier, and the task, although it doesn't get any smaller, it gets easier to navigate and understand.
I'm supportive of that as an approach.
To do just the map?
To start, yeah.
How the rest of you feeling? Visuals are good for me.
Yeah.
I thought this is kind of what we settled on at our housing committee.
Well, I think we're talking about two different maps. Because in the housing committee, we were talking about a map that attempted to define where we have, yeah, single family, duplexes.
Right, right, but, but... This right here is what we talked about last.
Right.
You know, so I thought, you know, we were gonna discuss more, you know, eliminating the RR, or is that gonna go as I go RS. I thought we were gonna have an overlay like Dan's talking about. I, that's the way I looked at it.
I'm just saying that it's two different maps that we're trying to...
I remember the other map.
Yeah. Okay, so are we all in agreement that that would be helpful to at least try to get us started on this exercise?
For the shot.
Okay, take a shot. Rebecca, you're still working, puzzle?
No, I'm not. I think that whatever step, however... I think that whatever step, however many steps it is, that moves it forward is a really good thing.
Okay.
And if that next step is viewing a map that shows what that configuration looks like, I think that's great.
Okay, and then, well, let's get that out of the way first, so, okay. All right, staff comments? Oh, excuse me, open public comment. John, back to you again.
No, I think I'll stop.
Okay, staff?
I've said enough.
Commissioner, comments? Move to adjourn?
Support.
No.
Motion. Thank you.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.